Well, good evening. My name is Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees. We hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting at 6:00 PM. I certify the former President that the meeting has been postponed to time and manner required by law. The meeting is open to the public and all public speaks. Our public comments and questions from the audience are confined to the designated time for the citizens of the Board. At this time, we're going to take Item Number 11 out of order. Item Number 11 is closed session. We're discussing Item 11A, Cooperation Regarding Career Contract Purchase Helped Students Textured Governor Phil 551074. Elaboration Regarding Potential Purchase and Acquisition of Real Estate Property. Texas Governor Phil Section 551072. Consultation With Attorney. Texas Governor Phil 551078. Even though this will be discussed, any further regarding these matters will take place back in open session at regular scheduled times. At this time, we'll just begin the closed session at 6:01.
Well, good evening. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and it's glad to have -- we're all glad to have you all here tonight. This is an exciting time of year. It's hard to believe we're coming up on the end of another school year. We're going to resume our meeting, which we called to order earlier today. We're going to resume Item 3A, and that will be our invocation. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jeremy Suter. He serves as Associate Pastor at Family Cathedral Church of Forney. Pastor Jeremy earned his theological degree from Southwestern State's Theological Seminary. He is married to Heather, who is a teacher in Rockwall. Together, they have a 19-year-old son who attends college and plays baseball. They have a 13-year-old in junior high school. When not serving the community and the congregation, he spends time with his family and kids at sporting events. We're so glad that they've relocated to Forney. They are located on Highway 80, and we're glad to have Jeremy here tonight. So please rise as he leads us in our prayer.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray that you bless this school board in everything that they do in leading this great school district. Pray you give them wisdom in every decision that is made. I pray you renew their strength daily to lead this school district in the way that they should go. Bless this board and all the employees in this great ISD with overwhelming support from the parents in this community. Pray for a hedge of protection around each of the campuses here throughout Forney, throughout the city, and that you keep them safe from any violence and any harm or threat that may come their way. We thank you in advance for what you're going to do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Well, the majority of our meeting tonight will be about recognition. We're going to start off right now with Item B, with our recognition of our Students of the Month. At this time, Mr. Jung, Executive Principal from North Forney, will introduce our Secondary Student of the Month, and then Ms. Christie Crabtree will introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Terry and Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of the very best at North Forney. My name is Michael Jung. I'm the proud principal of North Forney High School, and I'd like to present the True North May Student of the Month, Kaden Clark. Kaden Clark embodies the spirit of true north excellence. Kaden exemplifies excellence in all that he does at North Forney. He is involved in the Health Sciences Practicum, HOSA Certified Nurses Assistance Program, NFHS Student Council, and National Honor Society. Kaden participated and led the Culture of Excellence and Diversity Program, which promotes inclusion of all of his peers and teachers for all four of his years as a student at North Forney. And by the way, Kaden is a talented singer. His teachers share that he is always respectful, kind, and diligent. Kaden is graduating in the top 12% of his cohort and will be attending Texas Tech University this fall, where he will be pursuing a degree in human sciences. He is interested in entering the medical field as a cardiologist. We actually have a few from his North Forney village here to support him. His Assistant Principals, Mr. Floyd Webb and Ms. Janice Grace. When I asked him about any shout-outs he wanted me to give, he wanted to give a huge thank you to his parents and his sister. Please join me in congratulating our North Forney High School Student of the Month, Kaden Clark.
I have the opportunity to introduce one of our pre-K students. So it's kind of come around where we have a pre-K student and a high school student, or 12th grade student at the same time. I'd like to introduce Eduardo Andres Coats Cruz. Eduardo lives with his mom, dad, and sister. Eduardo is a fun-loving and brilliant pre-K student. He likes to help his class follow the social contract and rules of the classroom and school. Eduardo lives the Griffin mission statement. Grizzlies strive to have a positive culture that encourages the growth of all stakeholders by always having a smile on his face. He greets everyone with a smile and a good morning. Most recently, Eduardo got accepted into music school and is taking piano lessons. Thank you for letting me honor Eduardo as the Griffin Pre-K Student of the Month.
Let's rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Take pictures. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Susan Johnson, Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, to recognize another important donation.
Thank you, President Ferris, Board members, and Dr. Terry. We have two donations from the Ray PTO tonight, and we have Ms. -- or Doctor, sorry, Dr. Barbie Knack with us. Ray Intermediate School PTO has donated $5,137.42 to the Ray Intermediate to purchase PE equipment, as well as consumable supplies for students and staff. In addition, they made a second donation in the amount of $2,331.47 for every student to purchase an item from the book fair. So the administration recommends the acceptance of these donations totaling $7,468.
So Boards, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Green? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Is there a photo now? Are we doing a photo? Is there anybody here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to Item 5, Student Recognition. At this time, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Judy Weber, who will introduce our top 10 students from both high schools.
Dr. Terry and school board members, it's a pleasure to recognize these students. This really represents years of hard work that these students have put in over the course of their high school. So, students, we have a video we're going to play, and as your name is kind of presented and called in the video, we'd ask that you come up front. And then, at the end, we'd ask that the campus principals come up, and we'll get you all in a photo.
From Forney High School, Number 10, Tanner Williams. Tanner is the son of Travis and Tammy Williams. He plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in construction science. Number 9, Carson Riley. Carson is the daughter of Delaney and Chad Riley. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in biomedical sciences. Number 8, Emma Stoy. Emma is the daughter of Michelle and Daniel Stoy. She plans to attend Baylor University and major in biology before heading to medical school. Number 7, Harrison Burcom. Harrison is the son of Scott and Lori Burcom. He plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in aerial space engineering. Number 6, Aliza Malik. Number 5, Lauren Barbie. Lauren is the daughter of Melissa Barbie and John and Sherry Barbie. She plans to attend the University of North Texas and major in studio art. Number 4, Sarah Ivy. Sarah is the daughter of Laura Duckworth and David Ivy. She plans to attend Austin College and major in biochemistry. Number 3, Precious Ambo. Precious is the daughter of Victor Ingua and Chantel Free. She plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biomedical engineering. Number 2, our salutatorian, John Bowen. John is the son of John and Shannon Bowen. He plans to attend Abilene Christian University and major in mathematics and extraterrestrial A valedictorian for Forney High School is Zari Operado. Zari is the daughter of Maria and Jane Operado. She plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biomedical engineering. Congratulations to all our 2022 graduates.
I'd like to have Dr. Campbell, yes, join us for the photo.
From North Forney High School, Number 10, Haley Wilson. Haley is the daughter of Bobby Wilson. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in biology. Number 9, Trinity Craven. Trinity is the daughter of Bonnie Craven and stepdad Alan Robertson. She plans to attend University of Texas at Austin and take flight lessons. Number 8, Alyssa Hood. Alyssa is the daughter of Jolie and Christy Hood. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M Commerce and major in biological sciences. Number 7, Ryan Arvizo. Ryan is the son of Francisco and Rosio Arvizo. He plans to attend University of Houston's Cullen College of Engineering to major in mechanical engineering. Number 6, Samantha De La Hoya. Samantha is the daughter of Rebecca and Salvador De La Hoya. She plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in psychology. Number 5, Bella Acetuno. Bella is the daughter of Carlo and Jessica Acetuno. She plans to attend University of Texas at Austin and major in Korean to become a translator. Number 4, Dana Yambau. Dana is the daughter of Ivan and Desiree Yambau. She plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in biochemistry. Number 3, Bailey Baird. Bailey is the daughter of Stephen Baird and Dr. Michelle Baird. She plans to attend the University of North Texas and major in biology. Our salutatorian is Naui Clarizio. Naui is the daughter of Tracy and Robert Clarizio. She plans to attend Rochester Institute of Technology and major in graphic design. And the valedictorian for North Forney High School, Madison Hinson. Madison is the daughter of Matthew Hinson and Kimberly Bryce Hinson. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M Commerce and major in nursing.
Thank you, both high schools, Forney and North, for your top 10 students. Moving on to next item, Dallas College graduates with associate degrees. So we're excited to share this tonight. We have some guests from Dallas that are going to be with us also. Turn it over to Robin Pierce.
Yes, I have the honor of the privilege to recognize our Forney High and North Forney High students that will be graduating with their associate's degree from Dallas College this Friday, before even getting their high school diploma. And so tonight, we have the honored guests from Dallas College. We have Dr. Eddie Tealer, the President of Eastfield College, Dallas College, Eastfield Campus. Ms. Anna Mays is the Vice Provost for Educational Partnerships. We have Dr. Kimberly Flanders, the Dean of Educational Partnerships Central Region. Dr. Mike Walker, Vice Provost of School of Business Hospitality Global Trades, and the School of Law and Public Service. Yes. And then Dr. Tetsuya Umbyasi, the Vice Provost for the School of Health Sciences, joining us today. So, thank you. Dr. Tealer and your team, if you want to.
From Forney High School, we have Daniella Cardenas. Chloe Crane. Billy Luton. Carson Ray. From North Forney. We have Landon Prater. Jaden Rankin. And the others are not with us here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. And now I'd like to call to the podium, Mr. Neil Weaver, Athletic Director, and share some academic all -- there he is. Academic All-State and All-American recipients.
Thank you, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, family and friends. It is always a pleasure and truly a blessing to be able to recognize some outstanding students in our athletic programs in Forney ISD. I'll mention this, I'll get a shameless plug in. I dropped a sticker on your desk. We have LEAD 23, which is one of our leadership programs next week. You're all cordially invited. My secretary will send out an invitation. Those are juniors. The seniors actually accomplished a great deal without LEAD. We haven't been able to do it because of COVID, so we're excited to start that. These outstanding individuals, let's begin with Forney High School Academic All-State Golf. These students are members of THSCA Academic All-State, meaning that they've contributed in a very valuable way as a senior in the varsity golf program, and they've kept across the board All-A GPA. I believe Chloe Crane is first, and I think she was with one of the last groups that just came. Maybe she'll come back around. Second, we have Austin George. Andre Kushevsky. Lily Waymeyer. And Austin White. Our second group, representing our tennis programs from both of our high schools, first with Forney High School. I'll ask Coach Charner Williams to come up and join us at the front to recognize his students. Academic All-State Texas Tennis Coaches Association, same qualifications, Tanner Williams and Caitlin And from North Forney High School, Coach Spurgeon, if you'd come on up and join us at the front to recognize your students, Cassie Dodds, Olivia Nelson, Jaden Rankin, and Michaela Rooney. this evening. We also, we do have several girls, Academic All-State recipients. Coach Tricia Williamson is actually with her family. Her sister is being named as a principal tonight in Roy City ISD, so she asked me to extend that she couldn't be with us. But Coach Jason Bailey, one of her assistant coaches, in her stead, are recipients for Forney High School Girl Soccer, Academic All-State. Chloe Chadwick. Hannah Pearl. Casey Carter. Stephanie Turner. Paige Lewis.
Mr. Weaver, is that all for you?
Did we get the tennis Academic All-American?
Okay, moving on, the next Student Council. Dr. Judy Weber will make some introductions.
Mr. Ferris, and school board members, and Dr. Terry, this is a really great honor tonight. Forney High School Student Council received recognition from the National Association of Student Councils as a national council of excellence. So they've actually earned a sweepstakes, meaning they achieved an award in all categories that TASC offers. Outstanding Student Council, Community Service, Dash, Drugs, Alcohol Safety, Health, Energy and Environment, and Price and Patriotism. At State, they also received a Top 10 Project of the Year called Jack Pack and Top 10 Video of the Year for their Jack Pack video. They also were awarded a $1,000 scholarship to the summer workshop from TASSP. Lastly, Philip Jenkins was also elected to the TASC Board of Directors for a three-year term as an elected advisor. So let's recognize our Forney High School Student Council. Dr. Campbell, would you like to join in the picture also?
Good evening. Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize the Warren Middle School Tier Squad. The squad competed in the NCA competition on January 23rd, winning second place overall. In addition, the squad earned an award for technical excellence. Congratulations, students. Congratulations, students.
I think I've been here.
Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize the Warren Middle School Starsteppers Dance Team on being named the American Dance Drill Team Nationals, Junior High National Champions on March 27th. This is the second time the team has received this top honor. In addition, the Starsteppers also received numerous awards in dance, including Palm, Prop, Novelty, Lyrical, and Jazz. The team also finished second place in Best of the Best competition. They finished the contest as the highest-ranking middle school team. This team has also earned several awards at the Showtime International Dance Contest this year, including First Place Best of the Best Officers and Team, and Junior High Grand Champions Officers and Team. Congratulations to the Warren Middle School Starsteppers. Forney Fine Arts would like to recognize the Forney High School Highsteppers Dance Team on being named the HTE Dance Grand National Champions on March 26th. In addition, the Highsteppers also received numerous awards, including the HTE Grand Champion Officers, Best Showmanship, Best Choreography, Super Sweepstakes, Team Grand Champion, and many additional awards. This team has also earned several awards at the ADTS DFW Dance Championship, including Judges Award Officer Novelty, and at the Showtime International Dance Contest, earning Best of the Best Officers and Team, Most Outstanding Team, the WOW Award for Team Novelty, and many additional awards and recognitions. The FHS Elite Dance Team also was invited to the National Dance Alliance Contest through a participation bid. FHS was one of a handful of Texas teams presented, present, and completed their NDA contest journey, sixth-place Medium Varsity Game Day, and 13th-place Medium Varsity Palm, with over 4,600 dances, 430 routines, representing 31 states. The Forney Highsteppers represented Texas and Forney ISD extremely well. Congratulations to these incredible students. Forney ISD Fine Arts would like to recognize the North Forney Sapphire Strutters Dance Team for earning second place overall at the 2002 Dance Line USA Competitions on February 20th. In addition, the Sapphire Strutters also received numerous awards in dance events, including Palm Lyrical and Modern, Dance Line Gold, which is the highest team score of the day, for Team Palm Grand Champion Officers, and many more. The North Forney High School Sapphire Strutters cannot be in attendance this evening. I will be accepting their recognition on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you all. The crowd's getting smaller, so you're going to have to cheer louder, okay? We're moving on then to staff recognitions. I'll turn the microphone back over to Dr. Judy Weber.
Mr. Ferris and Dr. Terry and School Board, it's an honor to, once again, for an eighth year in a row, Forney ISD has earned a Best Communities in Music Education Award. This is its 23rd year for this award. It's recognized over 238 schools, school districts in the U.S., 75 school districts in Texas, and it represents school districts from 44 of our states. It recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders in their support for music education as part of a well-rounded education for all of our students. So let's recognize Dr. Mario Luna. Yeah, Dr. Luna. Yeah. Let's recognize Mario for the Best Communities in Music Education, and Janay Blanton. Represents hours of hard work by our staff. Thank you for all your hard work.
And with that, we will call a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Moving on to item number six, our reports. The next four items, our reports only, require no action. We'll start with our monthly financial report. Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we're here to talk about the operating results through the month of March 2020, 2022, excuse me, of this year. The background information for the report was included in your packet, but just to summarize, starting with the general fund, revenues collected to date was 98.9 million, and that's 77% of the amount estimated. And for comparative purposes, last year, at the same point in time, we were at 74%. So slightly ahead of where we were at last year, so we're looking pretty good on the revenue side. Moving on to expenditures, year-to-date expenses was 101.6 million, which is 73% of the amount appropriated. And for prior year, for comparative purposes, we're at 69% last year, and we've talked about this in the last few board meetings, but we're a little ahead on our expense side, just because we're funding a construction project out of our general fund this year. So I think we're about 7.1 or 2 or something like that million dollars expended so far this year on that project. And there was some money that was spent in the prior year, but we're just about ready to wrap that up. In fact, we're having a ribbon cutting, I believe, this week on that facility. So looking really good in the general fund. Nothing to be concerned with here. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected, and we're at 5.9 million up through March. And again, that's 89% of the amount estimated. Federal reimbursement for the month was 740,000. We served 129,000 meals this last, or the month of March. And in, like last, last few times that we've talked about this, that's just under 50%, as if every single kid ate for every day of the meal period in March. That would, that's the equivalent of about just, just under 50% of our total student body. All carted meal sales for the, for the month was 121,000. And for prior year comparative purposes, we were at 42% revenue collected for the year, for the, through the month of March. And again, we had coronavirus last, last year, certainly well ahead of where we were at, and we feel really good where we're at in our food service program for revenue. Moving on to the expense side of the equation, we got $4.1 million expended through March. That's 62% of the amount appropriated. And for prior year comparative purposes, we were about 60% expended. So looking really good there. We're not having, don't have a debt service report to present tonight. As I told you, in the last month, we're 100% expended, just about 100% collected in that fund. So there's really no, no activity really to report other than what we reported last month. Just, and then finally, the cash investments on hand at the end of March, it was 292 million dollars, the bulk of which was our capital project funds. We sold, sold some bonds in, in the month of February. It was about 165 million. So we still had a little bit left over from the last sale. That we're burning through cash pretty quick now with, with the OC going and Elementary Number 10 and a few of those other projects. So we'll start, we'll start tearing through that cash pretty quick at this point. But anyway, that's the financial report. Be happy to answer any questions you have this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I'll move on then to B, Third Quarter Investment Report.
So the, the third quarter, again, it ends March, this activity up through March of this year. Just to start off with, we had 293 million dollars invested. They were invested either at Citibank, you know, our deposit at Citibank, or invested one of our three investment pools, same as in the last quarters. The investments, interest that we earned on, on these investments is as low as .083% and as high as .25%. Would, would point out that our interest rates are going to start moving up. Fed's, just this last time they met, they bumped interest rates a half a percent. And the last time they met before that, they bumped them up a quarter a percent. And I'm hearing probably the next couple of meetings between now and July, they're probably going to move it at least another 50 basis points or more. So we should see those interest, interest rates start climbing on here pretty quick. So the, the interest earned for the quarter was 108,000. And again, that's pretty low considering how much we have on deposit, the bulk of which, you know, was about 200 million of that was, was in our construction fund. So that's pretty low as far as interest earnings, we don't like much money, but hopefully that'll start picking up soon when the interest rates go back up. It's not good if you're going to borrow money, but it's good if you've got money invested. Anyway, that's the, that's the investment report. If there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to our quarterly tax collection report.
Just as in prior quarters, our, our total taxable value for this last, this current year that we're taxing on was just, just under 6.5 billion dollars. And that, that represented about a tax levy of 88.9, almost 89 million dollars. To date, we've collected 87 million of that, which is 97.09 million, or 9%, excuse me, of the levy. For comparative purposes, down there in Bullet Number Two, we were about, just on the five-year average, about 97.4. So we're just slightly ahead of where we're at, as far, as far as the averages go. So looking really good on our current collections. Collections for taxes from prior years, we're at 726,000 collected, which it's, it's, that's, you know, on a percentage basis of our current levy, that's just, that's 0.82%. Again, in Bullet Number Three down below, we're normally have collected, on average, the last five years, it's just almost a million dollars, or about 1.4% of our current levy. And that's, that's slightly down from, from prior years. And if you'll look over there on the adjustment, in the adjustment column side, you'll notice that we haven't had as much tax, tax roll adjustments for the, for our delinquent tax roll as we had in prior years. Most of that stuff that we had in prior years, if we've talked, is, is due to ag rollback taxes. And we just didn't have that many, that much property coming out of ag this year as we had in prior years. And so as a consequence, we won't have a lot of taxes to collect on that. So, but, you know, all in all, we're looking pretty good on our tax collections where we expect to be at this time of year. So if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Moving on to item D, Master Planning Update. Mrs. Kim Morsak, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. This will be pretty quick. There's really only three projects to talk about this week. Hopefully, next week, I'll be able to bring Elementary 10 as our next board meeting as a fourth project. But really looking really good. We are in May and looking to be substantially complete, and hopefully at least be able to start storing some furniture in June and be ready in July at Willet and Johnson. We actually started punching Areas 1 and 1A last week at Willet, and I'm punching Johnson tomorrow afternoon. So classrooms, we have some classrooms that are completely done. It's looking really good. Wait, little bit of lag on some flooring that we're waiting on, but that is shipped. So we're looking good there. We had some acoustic panel delay at Griffin. I'm happy to say all that's in and in hand. So pretty much just wrapping up. You can see, this is Johnson, that's one of the hallways, is a, is a blue color. Carpet's in, that's a standard classroom down at the bottom. All the millwork is in, its cafeteria equipment is in, kitchen equipment's in. All the baffles are actually now in, in the gym and the cafeteria. They're installing floor this week in the gym and the storm shelter. Pretty much really getting, getting really close. Willet's in the exact same spot, different carpet there, but carpet in classrooms. As I said, I punched 1 and 1A last week, and it looks really good. So they're doing a great job there. That kind of shows you the baffles and the drop ceiling at the top picture there. And the storm shelter, as I said, floor's coming in this week. That's the learning stair in the hub, that middle picture, and then the bottom's the kitchen there at Willet, serving lines. So looking great there. The Bell Center last week was brutal with the rain. We were supposed to do a lot of concrete pours. It did delay that, but it didn't delay any of the completion of the project, which is good. Most of site utilities are in, sewer water, electrical installations being complete. They got another good concrete pour in. So most of the parking lot is done. They've had a couple good grading pours, pours. And so we're going to start going up, hopefully late this week, early next week. So looking really good at the Bell Center as well. And that's all I have for you on this week's update. So going really well. Any questions?
Thank you very much for keeping us on track. It's looking good.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven. I don't think there's anyone here present that signed up to speak for the board. Move on to item eight, Consent Agenda. Item 8A, approved minutes from April 4th, School Board Workshop. Item 8B, approved minutes from April 4th, Regular School Board Meeting. Item 8C, approved budget amendment. Item 8D, approved contract to the flipping group. Item 8E, approved purchases of police vehicles. Item 8F, approved TASB Risk Management Fund. Item 8G, Statement of Impact Forms for Charter Schools. The board may take action on each separately or collectively. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I've moved to approve the consent agenda collectively as presented.
Mr. Johnson's made a motion to approve collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item nine, Consideration Possible Approval of Resolution Approving for an Engagement Agreement for Bond Counsel Legal Services with Cantu Harden LLP and Walsh Gallegos Trevino, Kyle Robinson, PCs, and Other Matters in Connection Therewith. Mr. John Chase will present it this time.
As the boards are aware, the last, I guess since 2020, maybe the last time we approved bond counsel, Locklord and Walsh Gallegos is currently who we use for co-bond counsel on our bond transactions. Locklord, the attorney that, that represents us through them is John Hall. We've worked with John now for the last several years and are, are really comfortable with him. He does a good job, very knowledgeable. He is actually has, is left, is leaving Locklord, is starting his own practice with, with another group of lawyers, and the firm's name is Cantu Harden. And we would like to, can you, can you use John Hall on our bond transactions? And so we have a resolution before you tonight that would allow us to, to basically award our, our bond counsel work to Cantu Harden and Walsh Gallegos as co-bond counsel. So our recommendation is that you approve the resolution as presented so that we can move forward with, with that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. You've heard the recommendation from administration. Dr. Terry, do you have any other comments?
Just, just a good group that we would like to continue to working with. That consistency of partnership is, is really nice for our team, and they've done a great job for us. So we'd recommend approval of the resolution.
Boards, you've heard all the recommendations. Any questions of administration? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make the motion for the approval of a resolution approving an engagement agreement for bond counsel legal services with Cantu Harden LLP and Walsh Gallegos Trevino, Kyle Robinson, PC, and Other Matters in Connection Therewith.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 10, Consideration and Approval to Purchase of Fixtures, Furniture, and Equipment for Elementary Number 10 and the Keith Bell Opportunity Central. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As the boards are aware, the last couple of bond facilities that, projects that we've constructed and outfitted with furniture and equipment, we've asked the board to allow us, to give us a not-to-exceed purchasing threshold for these projects. With supply chains being constrained like they are, and being able to purchase items that exceed $100,000 without having board approval in advance, it would slow things down, and we'd really need the flexibility to go ahead and start ordering things. Because in some cases, we're hearing that our technology, for instance, could be, you know, as much as 180, almost 365 days out. So we purchase or procure, you know, all these, all these items through our purchasing cooperatives, or on a, you know, at the state level, they have some purchasing co-ops that we also participate in to get our technology purchased as well. And so it's really a formality for us to, to bring it before you, because the bidding process is pretty much already done. We just need to get our, our list of goods together. And as soon as we get that together, just go ahead and be able to place the order with the bidding. And as soon as we get that together, just go ahead and be able to place the order with the vendors. And so that being said, we're asking for a purchasing threshold on Elementary Number 10 of not to exceed $3 million, and for the Keith Bell Opportunity Central not to exceed $10 million. And so that's our recommendation. We will be giving you periodic results, reports in the, in your Friday reports on where we're at with these purchasing thresholds as, as we move forward with these purchases. So, but anyway, that's our recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Dr. Terry, any other comments?
I think Mr. Chase covered it. Just to reiterate, we will make sure and keep you guys abreast of these purchases and what they look like. I just appreciate the trust and the flexibility that you guys give to our team to make sure that we can get our schools open on time. Recommend approval of Elementary Number 10 and Keith Bell Opportunity Central, FFNE.
Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the purchase of fixtures, furniture, and equipment as presented.
Thank you. Ms. Green, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item Eleven, we took out of order earlier. Moving on then to Item Twelve, Consideration and Possible Approval Regarding Ratification Employment of Professional Contract Personnel. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move to approve the ratification of employment of contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs?
Ms. Bateman.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to Item Thirteen, Consideration and Possible Approval to Take Action on Probationary Contract Employees Extending Fourth Year. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I move to offer a probationary contract to an employee identified by administration to receive a fourth consecutive probationary contract and adopt the recommendations and findings presented by administration in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dobbs, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to Fourteen, Consideration and Possible Approval of Resolution Regarding the Purchase of Real Property Consisting of Approximately 20 Acres Near the Intersection of Akron Way and Gateway Boulevard and Being a Portion of Kaufman County Property ID Number 12971. As discussed in closed session, may I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion of the board to approve the purchase of real property consisting of approximately 20 acres near the intersection of Akron Way and Gateway Boulevard, property ID Number 12971.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Then Item Number Fifteen is our announcements. Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Just a few reminders. We do have a special call meeting. And Ms. Green, again, I apologize for this, but that is 7:30 in the morning. Just a reminder, that is 8:00 a.m. It will be a brief meeting, and we will have coffee, I promise. But that'll be the soonest that we can canvass the election. We also wanted to remind you of our two high school graduations on Monday, the 23rd. The first one begins at 4:00 o'clock. We have not received our final itinerary just yet from Globe Life. So as soon as we get that, we will get those tickets and itinerary in your mailbox. And then on the last day of school, there is a misprint there. We, I know the kids would like this, but we actually get out May 25th, not 24th. And so that last day of school, make sure that you're aware that is an early release day as well. And then we do have our monthly June board meeting on May 26th this year. That's a Thursday. Just pointing out, these are some different dates because of Memorial Day. And then our budget adoption workshop on June 27th. And Mr. Ferris, if it's okay, there is one other person in the audience that I think that the board may hear from at some point in time. I wanted to welcome to our Forney family, and that's Ms. Leslie Edwards. Is our new executive director for secondary curriculum and instruction. So we'd like to welcome her to our Forney family. She's been a part of us. She lives here. She's got kids in our school system. You probably know her husband, Nick, but we're excited to have her on our team coming from Mesquite for a long time in Mesquite, right? So welcome, Leslie. Mr. Ferris, that's all I have.
Any other questions from the board? I will call it 7:57. I got you out before 8:00 o'clock, people. Take notes. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.